Good evening and welcome to the April 4th meeting of Troy City Council. I am Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mr. Doug Tremblay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
As we gather today, let us be aware of our duty to render service to our fellow citizens and our community. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your past blessing and ask that you protect us in the future. Please watch over our citizens that are dealing with sickness, injury, and to protect our first responders and members of the armed forces. We ask that you help us make wise decisions for the citizens of Troy, including our future generations. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
I move to excuse Mr. Swazer. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to excuse Mr. Swazer. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer is excused.
We have three public hearings tonight. We'll begin with ordinance O-202016. Mrs. Knight, please read that ordinance.
Ordinance number O-202016, ordinance changing zoning of in lots 10578 and 10579 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M2 to zoning of, I'm sorry, from the zoning of general agricultural A to the zoning of A agricultural district, the city zoning.
I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the ordinance? The public hearing is closed. Mrs. Knight, our second one is ordinance O-212016. If you'll please read that one.
Ordinance changing the zoning of in lot 10574 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of R1 AAA, single family, to the city of Troy zoning of M2 light industrial district. This is the Cheney annexation land.
I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the ordinance? This public hearing is closed. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-222016.
Ordinance number O-222016, ordinance changing the zoning of in lot 9678, parcel D-08105060, in the city of Troy, from the dual zoning of M2 light industrial district and B2 general business district to the single zoning of B2 general business district. This is located off of Bruckner Drive.
May I declare the public hearing open? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this ordinance? Public hearing is closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the April 4th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, April 4, 2016. Committee reports Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared approving a subordination of a loan of RNE LLC. Personnel Committee reported recommending that legislation be prepared to move the positions of planning and zoning under the office, from the Office of the City Engineer to the Department of Development, and also to create a new position under the Recreation Board of Program Coordinator. There was an oral report regarding an appointment to the Community Improvement Corporation, and Mr. John Friggy was appointed. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing agreement related to the 2016 Troy Strawberry Festival. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing agreement with Miami County regarding the paving of McKay Road, and authorized the total paving program for the city in the amount of $1,105,000. Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the replacement of equipment associated with the primary clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant. Also, that legislation be prepared authorizing Miami Valley Communications Council to act as procuring agent regarding bidding for retail electric provider, and also to execute an agreement for the electric generation of and transmission services for city facilities. Resolution number R-142016, replacement of equipment associated with the primary clarifiers at the wastewater plant, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-152016, agreement with county for resurfacing of McKay Road, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-162016, bidding for the 2016 paving program, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-172016, an agreement regarding the competitive retail electric service provider for city facilities was given, first reading and adopted. Ordinance O-1726, amending salaries and wages to move positions was given, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-182016, amending salary ordinance to establish new position, first reading and adopted. Ordinance O-19, subordinate mortgage lien, was given, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-202016, the zoning of the Trader Annexation Land, first reading. Ordinance O-212016, the zoning of the Cheney Annexation Land, first reading. Ordinance number O-222016, a rezoning of land located off Bruckner Drive was given, first reading. Ordinance number O-232016, agreement Strawberry Festival for 2016, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council recessed into executive session, returned to regular session, and adjourned at 8:32 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
To accept the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Phillips to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
The first committee reports tonight are from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. William Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two for this evening. The first one is for the transfer of part of the Outlot 91 to the Troy City School District. Committee members Swazer and myself met on April 11th to consider recommending that part of Outlot 91, the land behind the Lincoln Center, be transferred to the Troy City School District. The school district is the owner of the land on which the center was constructed. This would put all of the land at the Lincoln Community Center into a common ownership of the school district. We believe that the interest of the public will be served by transferring of this property to the school district. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the transfer of part of Outlot 91 to the Troy City School Board of Education, respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair William Twist.
Are there any questions on this report? Please continue.
All right. The second one deals with farm lease agreement for part of Paul G. Duke Park. Committee members Swazer and myself met on April 11th to review the recommendation of the Board of Park Commissioners that approximately 69 acres north of the Paul G. Duke Park be offered for bids as a farm lease agreement. The agreement would cover an area of the recently purchased Hues Camp Farm that had previously been farmed. Until the city is ready to develop the land, having it farmed is a method by which the land would be appropriately maintained. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authoring the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a cash farm lease agreement for approximately 69 acres north of Paul G. Duke Park, respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair William Twist.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The Personnel Committee has the next report from Chairman, Mr. John Turwilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee has received a request from Mayor Beamish to approve the appointments of Phyllis Dawkins and Mary Davis to the City Beautification Committee for a term commencing immediately and ending July 1st of 2017. We support these appointments, and I move for approval of the appointments of Phyllis Dawkins and Mary Davis to the City Beautification Committee for terms commencing immediately and ending July 1st of 2017.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Turwilliger and seconded by Mrs. Snee to approve the appointments of Mrs. Dawkins and Mrs. Davis to the City Beautification Committee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
The next report is from the Recreation and Parks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Brock Heath.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on April 11th to consider use agreements associated with three concert events at Treasure Island Park that will include the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. Events that include the sale and consumption of alcohol at this venue will require specific council action. The alcohol sale and consumption will have, will have to meet all state requirements and follow best practices, including those related to security and safety. It is the recommendation of this council that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute the Treasure Island non-ticketed use agreements for the three concerts listed in the detailed report. Because of the number of details to be coordinated prior to the events, we support emergency legislation. We also note that the July 9th event will be subject to approval of the Board of Park Commissioners, as it was scheduled after the most recent board meeting, and approval of the June 25th and July 23rd events. Okay, this is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Heath.
Thank you, Madam President.
The Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips, has the next report.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Snee and Heath met on April 11th to consider the consent legislation provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation, or ODOT, regarding ODOT's micro-surfacing project to include the paving of State Route 718 in state fiscal year 2017. A small portion of the project is within Troy city limits, and the project is at no cost to the city, but consent legislation is required. It is the recommendation of the committee that we recommend that the consent legislation provided by ODOT be approved related to the paving of an area of State Route 718 within the city of Troy. And based on this ODOT format, we support the legislation being presented as an emergency measure, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing council.
Lieutenant Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. On the thing of alcohol, I don't understand why this has to be emergency legislation when the first concert is over two months away from now, June 25th. So, I mean, I don't, only thing I can see is that this emergency legislation is going to be like it was on Stone Bridge, to eliminate and take away the citizens' rights for a referendum if they don't like it. So, I just don't understand why this has to be emergency legislation. When you've got plenty of time, all you're going to do is call them and let them know that, yeah, we've got the, we've got the permit for alcohol. Anybody want to add to?
Mr. Titterington, would you like to make any comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason for the emergency request is that the first step after getting council approval will be to submit the appropriate documentation, permitting, insurance requirements, et cetera, to the various entities, including the State of Ohio Liquor Control Board. From our experience with past temporary permits, that is time-consuming. It does take some, some time to prepare not only the application, but the detailed maps, and then to wait for the back-and-forth with the state to make sure that we have all of the appropriate documentation to them, and we've answered all of their questions, and that does take several weeks to do that. So, and then once we do that, then we need to start doing our internal planning to make sure it's a safe and secure event.
But that doesn't really give me an answer of why it has to be emergency legislation. You said a couple of weeks. You've got over two months.
I said, no, sir. I said a few weeks.
A few weeks, okay. A few to me is a couple. You and I have a difference of what a few means.
Several, several weeks, multiple weeks, up to a couple of months, depending on what their activity is at the state.
Now, how long have you been planning this or thinking about this, that you've been dragging your feet to come, wait to this long to make it emergency legislation? I mean, this didn't just pop up to you. This has been on the table and going on for a good while.
No, this has been thought about for, for maybe a couple of weeks, and getting the acts signed and confirmed for those dates took some time as well, because we had to work into their touring schedules.
Well, you give a lot of answers, but.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience has any questions or comments about the agenda items this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R-18 2016.
Resolution number R-182016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids for a farm lease agreement for land located north of the Paul G. Duke Park. This is the first reading. There would be about 69 acres that would be under the farm lease, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
I do have a question, Madam President.
Mrs. Oda?
Mr. Titterington, what was the total purchase? What was the total acreage of the purchase?
Approximately 115 acres, 117 acres.
So, this is 69 acres that you're not planning on developing right away?
This is net of the amount, bless you, we intend on selling to the Miami County Park District, which is approximately 40 acres of that. And then there is the homestead itself that we're in the process of having split off. And so, this, and this area is the area that was historically farmed.
Okay. I just didn't remember what the total acreage was, so just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any further questions from council?
I move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-192016.
Resolution number R-192016, a resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 718 within the right-of-way of the city of Troy, Ohio, in fiscal year 2017, and declaring an emergency. This will cover a small area of State Route 718 within the city that will be in this project. This is the first reading.
Are there any comments from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We have several ordinances tonight. We'll begin with ordinance O-202016. Mrs. Knight, please read that ordinance.
Ordinance number O-202016, ordinance changing the zoning of in lot 10578 and 10579 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of A2 general agricultural to the city of Troy zoning of A agricultural district. This is the zoning of the land known as the Trader Annexation, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the second reading, and I believe the Community and Economic Development Committee will be setting a meeting.
Okay. Thank you. This will go to a third reading then. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-212016.
Ordinance number O-212016, ordinance changing the zoning of in lot 10574 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of R1 AAA, single family, to the city of Troy zoning of M2 light industrial district. This is applying a city zoning to the land known as the Cheney Annexation, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the second reading, and I believe this will also be a subject of a committee meeting.
Thank you. It'll go to a third reading also. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-222016.
Ordinance number O-222016, ordinance changing the zoning of in lot 9678, parcel number D-08105060, in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the dual zoning of M2 light industrial district and B2 general business district to the single zoning of B2 general business district. This has been recommended for approval of the Troy Planning Commission. It is located by 1201 Bruckner Drive, and this, I believe, will also be the subject of a committee meeting.
And this will also go to a third reading. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-242016.
Ordinance number O-242016, ordinance authorizing the transfer of the ownership of part of Outlot 91 to the Troy City District Board of Education. This is land to the rear of Lincoln Community Center. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-252016.
Ordinance number O-252016, ordinance amending ordinance number O-422015 appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio, for the year 2016. This is the first routine reappropriation. This is the first reading.
Are there any comments from council?
I move to suspend the rules. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read our last ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-262016.
Ordinance number O-262016, ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to execute Treasure Island non-ticketed use agreements for 2016 events at Treasure Island Park, and declaring an emergency. This would be the first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Beemich, do you have any comments this evening?
Just to thank you for the appointments to the Beautification Committee, both of those individuals are master gardeners, so that doesn't hurt to have that on the Beautification Committee, and so I'm very excited. And they are as well, to be a part of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, you have comments this evening?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Kerber, any comments this evening?
No, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Friggy, comments?
I have nothing at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. I would just like to extend a thank you and congratulations to Kim Rohr, who's retiring from the city after thirty-three years of service at the fire department. I think she's been with the city since high school, so she's had a long career with us, and she will be missed. Are there any comments from council members tonight? Any city staff have any comments this evening? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Jim Thompson, two oh nine, Notting Hill, Lene. Mrs. Baker, if you would indulge me tonight, I'd like to pass out, these are some maps that were supplied to Mr. Tittering and the mayor in reference to the bicycle trail behind our house. And this way, I know you folks were told last time, you know, you're not in the loop on this. It's, you're not involved in this, but I think it'd be nice, at least if you saw what's going on in case other citizens would question any of you, at least you would have a leg up on some of this. Would you mind if I?
If you will hand them to Mrs. Knight while she will pass them around. Thank you.
I'm just trying to touch on a few things tonight. I know you have a lot of people wanting to talk tonight, so I'm trying to stay out of getting into a little banter with anybody. I'm sure you'll appreciate that. The first thing I want to address, though, and actually I want to kind of involve Mr. Beemich, the mayor, on this, because this bike trail I know is something that he's very adamant on. So I'd kind of like to more approach you as opposed to Mr. Tittering on this. The last meeting, Mr. Tittering did say that you gentlemen were informed by your group that they had talked to the neighborhood and that most of the neighborhood had changed their minds since the last deal we had a year ago on this, and that, other than one or two holdouts, basically, they all had flipped and were not opposed to it. So in light of that, I do understand why they would be moving forward on something like this. But as I told Mr. Tittering that night, my gut feeling said that wasn't quite accurate. So the next day, my wife and I, we started knocking on doors. And there's approximately twelve houses that actually border the cemetery property that we're talking about. And since they're the only ones really have a dog in this fight, that's who we focused on. There's one neighbor, I will right off the bat say that I know has flipped, Keith Ranley. Originally was against it. He is a triathlete. He likes to do mountain biking. And I have seen him ride his bike out with Jeff Schultz. So I know he's on the property, so we didn't bother talking to him. Jeff was a good friend. I don't care. That's his business. But as we started talking to the other neighbors, we quit after talking to six of them because the question we asked, had anybody prior to last week's meeting talked to any of you about this, as far as this committee that they're dealing with right now? Their answer was no. You include our property as well, as seven right there. So it was like, I'm not going to mess around knocking on the other three doors because this totally counterdicts everything that these gentlemen were told originally, that the neighborhood had flipped and most were on board with this. So, and if, if you choose, and I understand you may not want to take my word exactly for it, I do have a list of all these people, their names and their phone numbers for most of them, and their permission if you want to contact them, to make sure we did indeed talk to them and that they said what they said. I don't mind supplying that should you want it. The other point I want to make, on your maps, you'll see a lot of red lines. And to the best of my understanding, if Mr. Tittering wants to jump in at any point, or the mayor, and correct me, we have been led to believe pretty much it's, that those red lines were existing trails that were out there, and the yellow is what they proposed to do. Is that, in general, Mr. Tittering or Mr. Mayor, is that pretty much your understanding?
There's been a lot of trails out there for decades.
No, no, I understand that. I'm going to be with you on that. No, I was just curious, though, as far as what, what the red lines, it says they are existing, was that, was that the existing trails that had been there? Like you said, there have been numerous trails. Are those the trails you're talking about?
It's true.
Okay, that's. Now, like I said, there's a few more people back here that I know are going to walk up and talk tonight, and they are also people that have lived there. One, I know, twenty, twenty-five years. There's another for at least five or six. We've been out there three years ourselves. That property, if you kind of divide it in your mind, if you're looking at the railroad tracks at the top of the paper, and you come back down on the paper, approximately two-thirds, that is an area that sits over a natural, it's a levee bank. I don't know if it was manmade. I assume it was. This area, after, I think, an old gravel pit area, at least you take gravel. Out there, there were a lot of trails. I'm not going to deny that. They've been there since Moses. I don't know. There are some new trails with it, I think, but I, don't quote me on it. When you get on the other side of the levee bank towards the houses, approximately a third, and I can only give you an approximation, of the red lines you're talking about, I can tell you, and I know what the other neighbors are going to stand up here and tell you, that the times we have been out there, that seventy-five percent of those red lines weren't there before. What I'm saying, those are new trails. They are not, they weren't existing. They had been made bike-rideable. They weren't there. I can say that emphatically because every spring and every fall, I go out in the spring for looking for mushrooms, at least one trip, and the fall for puffballs. The one thing that remains constant over those three years is that I've never found a mushroom or a puffball. And the other is, by the time I get all the way down and make a loop and it's starting to come back, I have faulted honeysuckle so much, because there's no existing trails out there, there are a few deer trails. I always cuss myself that I'm a fool to keep going back out during each year. There were a few deer trails. I can, I can draw them on a map. I know where they were. But it's, at least in my opinion, the best I can tell you, most of those trails were not there. Again, if you would indulge me, and it'd be probably easier or faster if you want, we could split them up and go both ways. These are just pictures of the property.
That's fine. You may pass them on.
And before you really look at them or so, at least to know what I'm going for on this. What you're going to see, basically, there was another, I need to add on a little more about this. It's been, by one of the other neighbors I know has been in close contact with Mr. Tittering and the mayor, the gentleman that were allowed to go out there, it is my understanding, and also to the one neighbor I'm referring to, Mr. Schultz and his people were more or less allowed to go out and trim up the existing trails that they found and make them bike-worthy, make them a little wider, because obviously deer trails are very narrow, so forth. And they were to go out with basically pruning saws and that sort of thing. What they ended up going out with was actually, there's a lot of chainsaw, and that's the reason you're going to see a lot of pictures on logs that are yay big, trees that are that big, that were definitely cut with chainsaws. What you're also going to see, some of you are going to say, what is this? If you look for little red dots on some of the brush that's laying on the ground, what that is, that is surveyor's tape, and it was used to mark and cut the trails. But see, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. When you take like a deer trail that's out there and you want to prune it so you can ride a bike on it, as you walk down the trail, you snip the offending brush away. You don't need to mark the trail because the trail shows you exactly where you're going. You don't need to mark it. So the red tags are nothing more than marking new trails. And I can't tell you how many pieces of ribbon are still laying out there on the same bushes. That's what those pictures are saying. So that's kind of backing up what I'm saying. These trails were not all there before. So again, they've overstepped their bounds, and they've kind of went on their own way. The last thing I'm going to point out, and I'm going to refer back to again, what Mr. Tittering said at the last meeting, was that access, this is actually pending or contingent with the county commissioner's land, the county's land, rather, and that would be the access point. The yellow lines show where they plan on coming in. Where you'll see the first little notch that comes into the woods off of that line, there's actually a six, and this is kind of immaterial in one way, but it's a six-foot piece of fence that had been recently cut out of there. That was a deer crossing. I know for a fact it was a low fence, and that's where the deer typically go, and they jump it. They removed the section of fence, which I'm sure the city or the county wouldn't have cared. But the other side of the coin is, and at the last meeting, Mr. Tittering did say, to his knowledge, that they had not gained access. They did not have permission from county commissioners to be utilizing that land out there for access. But yet, when you go out there after it rains, the field is chopped up, and where there's bike tracks, and they're called fat tires, is what this group is writing. It's up and down the field. So my point is, a lot of this was based on, for your decisions, was that the neighbors had flipped. And I can prove, and I have shown you, I'm told you at least, and I can prove it. That's not a fact. So what you were given was very bad information, at the least. I'll leave it at that. The trails that they've cut, they've, they've created new trails. That wasn't in what I understand, what you had to understand. They weren't supposed to go on there with chainsaws, and there's absolute proof. And they weren't supposed to be in the farmer's field. What this reflects, at least, at least in my mind, sir, Mr. Mayor, is that this kind of reflects bad on you. And I mean, it's unfortunate. You've, it's not a bad idea necessarily, but the people you've entrusted to do this, they have kind of run amok, and, or so it appears. That's my opinion. And so obviously that reflects on you, I think, but.
I'll take that reflection, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Those people are professional people. I respect. I know who they're, who they are. I know they care. I have always tried to have recreation as a goal of mine since I became mayor. There's no secret. I'm looking for things that will appeal to all ages and all different kinds of wellness activity. So I stand by those people. But I also have said very clearly, we are looking at some of the concerns, distance away from the neighborhood, where we enter, where we leave. And those are still things that the ad hoc committee that's been put together is investigating. So I, you know, I'm not going to argue with you. You know, you can say what you want, and I can say what I want, and we'll just agree or disagree. But the fact is, I will stand by the committee because I know who they are, and I know what kind of caring people they are, and I know how involved they are in this community. And so their interest is to try to find different ways that will allow for all people to have something that they enjoy doing in Troy, Ohio, USA. And I stand behind that.
Most of what you've said, I don't, I don't have.
I didn't think you would, Jim.
No, not actually.
I didn't think so.
But the part that kind of bothers me, sir, I don't understand this, because.
I'm not arguing with you.
No, 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 we're not arguing. I'm just making a point. I don't understand, because you, okay, you were a former educator.
Yep. Still am.
If you, back then, would have caught your students, and this is similar, not the same, but you caught your students, let's say, cheating on tests, lying about homework, or so forth, you don't reward those people. You punish them. That would be one aspect. And I'm not saying you're going to punish these people. But what you're saying in one, one part is that, basically, because these are good people, you're advocating the fact they gave you false information, and they've given you false information on all these four points. I don't, I don't understand how you can advocate.
I'm not going to argue. I'll just say, we have said, and we continue to say, we're concerned with the neighbors keeping it, the trails, that's public, that's city property, first of all. Let's, that's city property.
I understand.
And we're trying to listen. We have listened, and everybody knows that I shared. We want to try to think of our, the neighborhoods there. We are looking, and we still haven't found a solution yet, but we're still looking for a way to get in and out and still have people enjoy their opportunities on that mount, mountain bike trail. I'll let Patrick, I do know Patrick's taken a great interest in this as well. I mean, people have listened, and the committee has listened. I won't speak for Patrick, but I do know he and another member walked that trail system to make sure that it met the goals that we've asked for, and that is to, to stay as clear away from the neighborhoods we can, and to look at a good way to get in and out of. It's a win-win that way, and I've asked for that. So I'll, I'll just, you know, Patrick actually did walk the whole system.
As I have, yes. I understand.
Mr. Titterington?
The mayor is correct. Mr. Tremblay and I went out last Wednesday. I think we walked just about every step of the trails that are out there to look at proximity of the trails to the properties, access points, condition of the trails, what may or may not have happened out there. And before I get into that, I do want to clarify a couple of things. Yes, it was indicated to us at the meeting that the neighbors felt better about the project. Where I, and I think anybody and everybody who was at that meeting will disagree, is that, that fact or fiction, whichever it may be, had bear, had total bearing on whether we accepted the project or not. That's, that's simply not the case. All right? That was something that made us feel better about the project and what was going on, but it certainly did not mean, that was not the only reason that we were okay with moving forward with, with the plan. So I did want to clarify that. Couple of other things to clarify is, my understanding of the, the red ribbons that are out there is that they're not surveyor ribbons. They were not, my understanding anyway, I'm not going to try to misrepresent anybody, but my understanding, and from what I have heard, is those ribbons, which are frayed and, and obviously old, at least most of them, were from the original study that was done two years ago, that that was part of the tracking that they did. Part of the, whether it was official surveying or not, that they did to mark where paths would go, to then come up with some cost estimates that, at the time approached, well, it was over six figures, is what their estimate would have been had a professional come in and done that. So wanted to clarify that. The, there's also some misinformation about chainsaws. Yes, obviously chainsaws were out, used out there. Mr. Tremblay and I did verify that. There was never any prohibition against using chainsaws. I think the one thing that was not mentioned is that, and, and we did verify that this afternoon, and that is, is that some, if not all, of the work that was done of clearing trails was done in consultation with your boss, Jim, Mr. Drake. He did verify that this afternoon. And so where there were trails, or where there are trails, and, and Mr. Tremblay can correct my, my memory, but I don't recall any new, fresh trails out there, at least not the ones that we walked. All of the trails looked like they had been there for a while. Whether that's, I think he said, when Moses walked the earth, I don't think he ventured this far west. But there are, there were a significant number of deer tracks. They did look like they were very well-worn. We could, we could see that the chainsaw cuts and the trees, the, the pieces of tree that were laying there were from significant trunks that had fallen across the path. And not, they were not trunks that were fresh trees that were cleared to create new paths. As a matter of fact, it was clear that they had stopped doing work because there were still a number of those trunks across paths. And so my immediate reaction was, is that they were doing those folks a favor that walked those paths by clearing those, those trunks out of the way and making that, those paths, in effect, safer. Because we do know that there are people walking as well as riding out there on the paths. When we walked those trails, we had two things in mind. Number one, how close did those trails go to the backs of the properties? We noticed a couple of things. Number one, the trails were a significant distance away from any of the properties. Number two, that in most cases, the elevation of the trail was much lower than the elevation of the property. Or there was a hill in between the trail and the property that served as a buffer. Number three, that the, the area between the trail and the backyards, where we could actually see the backyards, was blocked very well by pretty thick trees and forested areas. And as Mr. Tremblay pointed out to me, reminded me that in April, there are no leaves on the trees, and so by the middle of summer, you're going to have a lot of greenery, a lot of leaves on the trees that will block it even more effectively. When we looked at the, the proposed, proposed yellow lines and tried to estimate the distance between those lines and the property, it's approximately one hundred and fifty to three hundred feet. As a matter of fact, my understanding, Mr. Thompson, is, is that the distance between the trail that's there, that is in red, that there is no other trail that is going to go closer to your property, but that's a good football field away from the back, your backyard.
It's fifty yards, actually, sir. I measured it. I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm just telling you.
Okay, so that's half a football field.
That's, well, a hundred yards versus fifty, that's, that's pretty big. And I won't mention about the yellow, but I have someone here that will dispute that, I'm sure. But that's, that's fine, sir.
The yellow is the proposed trail, so it has not, hasn't even been cut yet. So it's all on paper. It's all estimated, and it's all based on aerial photographs. So, you know, we can debate how many feet, and how many, how many feet close, and how many feet away. So in looking at it, in, in walking those paths, in, in seeing the proximity to the properties, how quiet it is, the distance between the forest and the trees in between the, the trails and the properties, as well as the elevation change, changes, and in discussing it with the mayor after, to let him know what we had seen out there, you know, we were still committed to the, to the project. The one significant issue that is still out there that needs to be resolved, and the committee knows it, is where are they going to access the property? Because we do not want that property accessed from the, the maintenance barn area of the cemetery, because that means that, that folks have to come through the cemetery on the, on the drives to get there. And from two, from the discussions two years ago, we, we recognized that having an access point adjacent to Notting Hill is not, not advisable, and, and we want to avoid that at all costs. And so they continue to pursue discussions with the county. They are to be coming back to us to let us know what the, the county has said on that. I think that's everything. Thank you, ma'am.
We could stand up here all night, and we could banter about the, the information. We could stand up here all night, and we could banter about the, the information I gave you originally, as far as the information being not correct, and it doesn't matter, appears it doesn't matter, so, I appreciate you folks' time, I know there's other people that want to talk, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Kelsey, and I'm a citizen of Troy, and I first have a question, are you going to resume spraying for mosquitoes now? Anybody know?
Uh, I don't, whatever we spray for now is what we're, will continue to do, I don't believe we spray, uh, mosquitoes out there, no.
But we should, and I don't know if you know why, um, we've had the West Nile for quite a while, and it's been here in Ohio, and in Miami County, then we have this new one, this Zika, and I don't know if you've seen the commercials on TV showing these poor little babies being born the way they are, how can we as citizens, if, sit back and not do what we can to protect all these kids? They may not be your children being born now, but what about your grandkids, or your great-grandkids, or a neighbor, or a friend, or someone you worked with? We are responsible, as citizens, to protect people that live here, from getting this disease. There's a lot of things that we can't do anything about, donate a little money or something for kids' cancer, or, or for other diseases, but this is something that we as citizens can do, and if you people can sit back and think about what might happen to your family, or to your friend's family, or anybody else's family, when there's something that we can do.
Did you have your address, Ms. Kelsey?
1183 Edison Avenue. Thank you.
Patrick, I know, I had asked-
Thank you, Robin.
I had asked a couple of years ago about spraying, and you said we didn't spray anymore. Was there a reason we don't? I mean, I know we used to, when we first moved here, there was spraying.
Yeah, and we, and we will do it periodically in those areas that, you know, are, we know there are real concentrations, we don't do community-wide, I don't believe we've done that in a long time, uh, most communities, my understanding is they don't anymore.
I don't know how effective it is.
Yeah, I, I can reach out to, uh, the park superintendent, or the park board and ask.
Well, the city of Tip City is starting to do that this year again.
Okay. And at the same time, I would assume that there are some people who are concerned about the chemicals, who don't want it sprayed, so, there's, there's a little bit of, some back and forth there with those who want it and those who don't.
We will look into it, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Wade Westfall, my current address is 2570 Troy City Road, I'm a real estate holder and developer in the city of Troy. I stand tonight in support of the mountain bike trail that's been before council, I am avid, I am an avid cyclist. My wife and I enjoy road riding, kayaking, and mountain biking, and for me, my favorite is mountain biking. It's the only sport that I find myself traveling nearly in an hour, one way to Yellow Springs, to enjoy the John Bryan system on a weekly basis through the spring, summer, and fall. I could stand before you tonight and share with you the economic impact that I personally have had on local bike shops in our county, but since this is a public meeting, and the news media is here, I feel it's best, it's in the best interest of my marriage, that my wife not be informed of that economic impact to the local paper. I can tell you from personal experience, and I know many avid cyclists, in fact, the number of them are with me tonight, and the amount of bike purchases they alone have made, have been in considerable amount on their toys. I can also tell you that they are all very respectable. Many of, if not most, are the first to volunteer to work on the trails, at our local kids' triathlons, adult triathlons, cancer runs and walks, and are some of the biggest financial supporters, not to mention supporters of our local eateries and pubs after a group ride. I've seen idle, I have seen communities sit idle and watch opportunities go by, I am proud to be a part of a community that sees the positive, gets past a few fears, and goes forward. This is another opportunity, in my view, another spoke in the wheel, that makes Troy Troy, a great community to live, work, and play in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants us to speak?
Okay, I'm here for the bike trail, I'm not a speaker, uh, so you're going to have to bear with me, uh, I really not be here, I'm not real thrilled with this, uh, I'm a property owner at a bu-
Can you name an address, please?
Tony O'Neill, 249 Riverside Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm a guest at it, of course, uh, my ground abuts to that, and let's just start off with the math that Jim gave you, the one parcel, if you look at the oval, the center oval, well, that, uh, outline in the orange, that's my property, well, basically, my property creates the buffer that they're asking for. Why is my property creating the buffer that they're saying they're giving, and the other ones have such a huge buffer? If you look at the yellow where the proposed, um, site is, or, or trails, it almost touches my property, okay? I lived there for about 25 years, probably plus, or whatever, uh, the trails that they're now using are actually deer trails, okay? I've been back there an awful lot, okay? Now, when you go over to the flat where the Franz brothers had, and they actually used that when they put in the, uh, the overpass, uh, by the, uh, junior high, then that low, we'll call it the bottom area with the pit run, they've created that, and that was used, okay? Uh, so those trails are existing, they haven't been in use for probably 23 years. As far as, uh, it's going to open up the privacy, one of your, uh, members and one of the, the neighbors the property adjoins, uh, the cemetery ground, is, uh, my, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Schultz has, uh, met, I believe, or to my understanding, with Miss Mayor Beamish and Mr. Titherington, uh, behind closed doors, we'll call it, and gotten the approval to do some clearing and this and that, and getting the bike paths ready, which they've already started, and if they don't have access, and they don't have this, and they don't have that, how can they even start the thing? And they're actually using the trails. Okay, well, in doing that, um, you know, it, it makes it think like, or, it makes it seem like it's a good boys' club, a good, good old boys' club, you know, let's get it done, get it in, nobody can say anything. At least that's how it is to me. Uh, you know, it's good for what they want, and the heck with the rest of us. Okay, uh, the ground is actually, uh, coated for cemetery use, which is 690, and that being for headstones and grave, and graveyards. Okay, pardon?
No.
Okay, the ground was purchased for $220,000, it was done through a, or close, within dollars, you're shaking your head, no?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay.
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, about $220,000, uh, purchased for, or through an emergency session, the money was approved, and it was, and I'm sure behind closed doors or in the emergency session, it was set for the future growth of the cemetery for many, many, many years to come. That's fine, well then, that's, that's what we use it for. Um, you know, I don't know how somebody can say that, you know, all of a sudden, let's take it from the cemetery, but anyway, let's go to, uh, Mr. Schultz. Uh, Mr. Schultz, he's cut down approximately, well, he's cut down 30-plus trees directly behind his house, and his own cemetery property, he's cleared all the undergrowth for about 18,000 square feet approximately, okay, that's about twice the size of his city lot that he pays taxes on, so he's increased his yard space by three times, okay? That's at the taxpayer's expense, that's my expense, okay? Uh, he says he has the approval and the blessings, Mr. Titherington and Mayor Beamish. And then, he gives, he does give Dave Hastings a little credit, because he said, Dave said he could take the fence down, the existing fence, so we can't leave Dave out of there. Uh, the number of riders, Mr. Schultz says, are around 12, that he has in his group, and a lot of those not even being from the Troy area. I have no idea about Mr. Wade Fall, or, Westfall, and, uh, Wade, uh, friends and where they're from, but, um, let me see, seems like an awful expensive playground for very few, and Mr. Schultz being the biggest, uh, party, that's going to benefit the most. He has a personal trail cut from the 18,000 square feet that he's cleared, directly to those paths, and then back to his house. He has that path and other paths tagged with no trespassing signs, and, ground is, um, is, uh, under surveillance with a camera, and that is on cemetery property, not his. How can he do that? Uh, okay, the trails would definitely create, uh, an invasion of privacy for myself and the other property members, um, and, uh, you know, I'm not for it, I can't imagine any of the other property, uh, owners that touched that are either. It's been like that, like you say, it's been like that forever. Uh, those flags that were there, they were not there, they have not been there in the past, because two years ago, when it was first looked at, uh, two city members came out, they called me and asked if they could use my property to access it, to flag, I said, sure. They were out there, I have to come home, they were out there doing it, stopped, talked to them, they placed about three flags and said, oh, forget it, okay? The other flags, when I've walked it the last couple days, those are all new, those are not worn, those are not patterned, um, yeah, so, I've walked it in the last two days, and that's what I've got to say. I've got pictures in this, if you'd like to see as far as the clearing that's been done on Mr. Schultz's, uh, property, or not on the cemetery's property, I'm sorry, so you can look at it and see in the clearing that he's done, he's just pushed everything up into piles and created a hell of a mess, you know? So I don't know why, you know, we have to have this shut down in our throes, you guys can have your bike trails, your right path, put it in your backyard, not ours. Comments? None? I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, any further?
Hello, I'm Michael Trion, 413 Bear Run, Pickwa, Ohio. Um, I just wanted to share with you, pretty much same situation that happened a few years ago in Pickwa, where Smitty's Bicycle Shop on Covington Avenue, which is also known as US 36, wanted to put in a BMX park, and of course, neighbors scared of change, decided they didn't want any part of that. Of course, they were outnumbered, and it went forward, and it's been nothing but positive for the community. I've been a business owner for 34 years in Pickwa, come in contact with an awful lot of people, and I've had numerous young men, or kids, excuse me, and their fathers, that have enjoyed this park together, you know, and so, you know, it's just been so positive for the city, and I've heard nothing negative, and I feel that this is, uh, you know, certainly the same type of situation, and, you know, I can understand these peoples, um, feeling like they've been infringed upon, but actually, it kind of sounds like they've had their own little playground, and somebody else has discovered it, and they don't want to share, and so, I-
Hey, I take offense to that, that is wrong.
You had your say.
Yeah, yeah, well, you don't-
Excuse me.
I, I'm just here to s, to say, uh, I, I hope you can consider what this can do for your city, thank you very much.
I tell you, I take real offense to that, that ground is laid there dormant, and nobody's messed with it for the 25 years I've been there. As far as to say it's been our personal playground, it's a bunch of crap. You know not what you're talking about. All right? What we're upset about is because it's going to become open to people like that, it's going to become open to people, to whoever wants to walk back there, okay? They're going to have access to our place. If you look at Mr. Schultz, and he's tagged it already, as far as no trespassing, and it's under surveillance, he realizes there's going to be a problem. Now, you want to say that it's somebody's personal playground, it is Mr. Schultz, because he's done all that clearing, with the approval that he says you've given him, and Mayor Beamish.
Good evening, my name's Craig Carroll, um, from Tip City, Ohio, 2221 Blazing Star Drive, uh, I am one of the fat bikers that has previewed, uh, that's going to maybe be approved or not, um, the first thing I'd like to address is the positivity, um, I've watched the former meeting, has it Mr. Thompson, uh, addressed, and all I can say is, uh, we value your opinion, and I'm a property owner too, and, secondly, I did hear many things about riffraff being back there, I, I am not from Troy, but I taught at Sound City Music for 10 years, I come to Duke Park, I ride the mountain bike trail on the Riverside, um, it's a great thing, you guys are doing a great job, um, but one impact, uh, that mountain bikers or bicyclists are, they're respectable people, um, that promotes a healthy lifestyle, I know this is a property dispute, and I understand that, um, the one thing that I've noticed when I went back to check the trails out, um, there were other sections that were done by kids on BMX bikes, that for years, I've known the stories, there's been a motocross track, um, if the city does vote that, and the property lines are, you know, there's distance away from the trails, uh, the one positive thing is to keep riffraff, anybody doing drugs, anything back there, I'm sure that stuff goes on, if you have a presence back there, people riding, families, there's walkers, hikers, I ride many mountain bike trails where people share the trails, I'm sure, hopefully everyone would agree in, in the long run that they could use this, um, it's a win-win for the city, um, we come up all the time to ride, we spend money in the town, the last thing we want to do is create a conflict here, but I just wanted to say I'm for it, and, uh, hopefully everything will work out, so, thanks for your time.
I do want to make one clarification, and we will take further comments, but I'm, my understanding of this is that this is an administrative decision, which means it is not a council decision, and so, um, you know, we'll be glad to listen to whoever wants to speak, but I just want to let you know that it's not this, you know, not council that's going to make the decision on this.
Hi, this is Jill Weaver, I live at 618 Fortune Drive, and I'm one of the bordering properties over on the right side, opposite of Schultz, um, and as you, if you notice the blue circles, mine is one of the smallest, Schultz is larger, and of course, Mr. O'Neill's a setback into his property. If this yellow proposed line is going to go through, I think we need some protection, um, obviously, it looks like we're not going to have a say on the red trail, but I hope, uh, Mr. Mayor, that you will represent everybody, and not just the bike people, uh, because we're all part of this community, and the two people who spoke of that are not from this community don't pay taxes here. So I would hope that you're going to listen to the residents, and, um, the people who border it, and again, I know whether it was said or not said, that approval was made, uh, Mr. Schultz did make a visit to my house today about 5 o'clock. Mr. Schultz did make a visit to my house today about 5:00, and I didn't appreciate that visit from him. So, he's using his power to overstep. He also made mention that he knows I have children in the school system, so obviously, he's used his records with the school system to find out who I am, who my children are. So, I don't appreciate any of that, and it makes me nervous. So, he has stepped way over his bounds, as far as I'm concerned. I have asked and met with many of you that I do want to be on the committee, so I can at least have some say. And I would also like to know what the schedule is of the yellow proposed route.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you have a schedule yet specifically on the yellow-
I'm not aware of any set schedule.
In fact, everything's on hold, as I was telling you.
That's correct. True.
11210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. I feel sorry for these residents out there, and I wish we could get the citizens of Troy to come to these meetings like we have all these people from out of town coming in here to support the city of Troy. But they're not paying taxes, but they want to play on our ground. That's not good. I don't think either one of you are getting any stars tonight. Your citizens are looking down on their nose at you. And, you know, I think it was wrong that they even circumvented you people out of this whole thing, behind closed doors. Now, we've got Reardon Park out there, and that was done for the youngsters, and it was a good thing it was done, but you haven't done anything in all these years to improve it for their kids. Now, you want to go a bike path out on a cemetery, but you don't want to build anything and improve it for the kids. It just don't make sense. Or if the kids aren't as good as the people from out of town, you know, something ain't right here. It just isn't chiving. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I've been reading in the police reports that our city police are going around and sighting cars with flat tires, or license, or whatever. You know, I know they're supposed to serve and protect, and I think they would do better to get on the heroin, the meth, the cocaine, and get those junkies rather than the junk cars. I mean, that's what we're paying them for, you know, to keep that kind of stuff out of Troy, not junk cars. I mean, I understand why they don't want the junk cars here, because, you know, we want this to be a town for visitors and tourists, not so much for the citizens of Troy. We pay more now than we've ever done, and we're getting less service from the city of Troy than we ever did. A 97-year-old woman out there on Dorset, and whatever that road is down from Surrey, lives on the corner there, she's 97 years old. She got a letter from the city, from the people that ride around, if you don't clean up the sticks in your road, out here in the street, we're gonna clean them up and bill you. She's 97 years old. What happened to our city? I mean, what happened to the people that work for the city to clean up this stuff? I just don't, it just don't make sense to me anymore. The city of Troy is geared for money. That's all it cares about, is money. He said tonight in his prayer for the citizens, you might as well leave them out of it. The citizens, you don't care about the citizens. All you care about is money. And what's good for the good old boys, as they said. And that's what it seems like it's about, good old boy. Mr. Kendall up there, he wanted this thing. He was the one initiated it. Another time, you know, I mean, the council isn't up here getting paid by the taxpayers to do their own personal agendas. This is twice now, we got Mayor Beamish there, his personal agenda, treasure island, waste of good money. But we'll put a $10, $20 tag on the tags on the people, so they can have to pay more for taxes when you could have used that money for the streets. You could have used that money for sidewalks. No, we don't want to do anything to help the citizens, we want to gouge the citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments?
I don't know, I like that. But I don't feel that, out of towners ought to be able to speak about my property, about what is adjacent to it. You shaking your head, Mayor Beamish?
I think everybody should listen, but we do the best we can.
Well, I don't feel that you do. I think that the biggest reason that you have this without going to council is because you say there's not gonna be any funds or any money involved from the city of Troy. That's a bunch of crap. It has to cost something. The two employees that came out to put a few flags, they were there for a half an hour. All right, they get paid. There we go. We've got an expense. They're gonna have to have emergency vehicle access, who's gonna put that in? We're gonna have to have some signage, because Mr. Schultz says, he's even told some of the neighbors that it gets pretty dangerous back there because they travel so fast, okay? And who's gonna be liable for all that?
Are there any members of leadership tour in the audience this evening? If you would like to-
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to recess and do executive session for discussions of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mrs. Snee to move into executive session. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips? Mr. Phillips?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
We thank the rest of you for attending tonight's meeting. You are welcome to stay till after the executive session, if you so desire. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we enter back into council session. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Phillips to enter back into council Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Meeting is adjourned.